Good afternoon. At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome. We have an agenda before us. The corrections to that agenda or changes to that agenda, I know of one, that agenda item number fourteen has been requested to be removed from this agenda, be considered at a future meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We will do a roll call of our city council members to assure that because we are connected largely by distance that we have a quorum of the council. Kyle, would you take the role?
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Craig, here I am, you're.
Yep, gotcha, here.
Steve Meister.
Here.
I'm Bear Coler.
Here.
John De Kramer.
There.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Mozinski.
Here.
The council is all present. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the work session as well as a regular council meeting. Both were held on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Are there any corrections to note? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings?
So moved, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. This will move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
I'm Bear Coler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Mozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the Americans for Disability Act Transition Plan for Public Sidewalks and City Rights of Way. To conduct this public hearing, I will call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, yeah, you should have the ADA Transition Plan for our public right-of-way included in the packet. This is a requirement of federal law passed in nineteen ninety. A lot of communities did not have a transition plan in place, and Marshall was one of them, an official transition plan. The state DOT put a little pressure on all the communities and counties across the state starting about a year and a half ago to get these transition plans put into place to ensure that we are doing our due diligence to make sure that everything's accessible. So, this document that was put together by our staff and our team is it's a, it's an evaluation of what we have for sidewalk and pedestrian ramps in the community of Marshall. So, a lot of work went into evaluating our right-of-ways for compliance with the law. And it also outlines a process for making improvements.
Oh, where were they?
Facilities into compliance.
They were like, how are you?
So, at any rate, this is a public hearing meant to gather any public input from the community after they've had a chance to review it. We did send this out to a few specific stakeholders who may have an interest in this document. So, the intent would be to take input at this meeting and in the coming weeks from the folks who we directly solicited to and come back to the council at a later meeting for approval of the document.
Okay, thank you, Jason. At this time, then, as part of the public hearing, as Jason has indicated, if there's any public comments, any person wants, and there also will be other opportunity outside of this meeting before it is adopted. So, at this time, I'd entertain any input on the ADA Transition Plan. Does any member of the council have any input at this time? Yes. John?
Just a couple of things to point out. You know, if you look at the priority areas where we have in the self-evaluation, and I'm looking, just by the way, on page twenty-two of the report or thirty-six of the packet. You know, it points out that we've got approximately four hundred thousand in investments to do on this to eliminate some of the accessibility barriers. And thinking back on our action last meeting, you know, we, we put about eighty thousand into the budget. So, at that rate, you know, the priority items, if we keep that up, we're looking at about five years to complete that list. Which, you know, if you're looking in the text of a college student coming in that's using a wheelchair, they're going to be in and graduated before we get through the priority items. I guess I would like to see with, as long as we're in a situation where if we do bonding that we're in a very low percentage, we were under one percent the last bond, that if we're going to do some bonding, perhaps look at putting in an amount, which I'm not sure what that amount is. But adding to that, so we can get kind of a jump on this, or otherwise, we are going to be way behind on this, I think, all the way through, even though our five-year capital plan has quite a bit going on in it. You know, we've got a long ways to go. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, John, for that input. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I would just like to concur with what John said. You know, as a contractor who's built a lot of homes for ADA clients, I've come to the realization that this is a big part of our community. And I just want to, back what John said, I think we should maybe address it a little more rapidly. Obviously, the ADA Act has been around since nineteen ninety. So, we've had thirty years to get this done, and it's not done yet. So, I would just say, John, that I would support that.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
How much of the, of the developments, the priority developments that need to be done are an additional workload as far as load management for city staff?
Jason, do you want to address that?
Yes, and I can clarify some of the statements that were made from the councilman, De Kramer, and Mozinski. So, the eighty thousand that I believe you're referring to would probably be the funding that was discussed for our bike trail rehabilitation at the last meeting. I believe that was at the last meeting. So, that, that covers a couple of the areas that may have needed some improvement. And those dollars will continue to do so as we upgrade ramp crossings to streets and maybe make minor compliance tweaks in some of the trail sections. But, you know, the, the issue is, is a little larger than that. And how we're really attacking compliance right now, it's through the overlay project, the Mill and Overlay Project and our reconstruction projects. Those are the biggest two drivers we have in getting compliant sidewalk and compliant ramp crossings. The other thing that we appreciate is when community members bring priority areas forward to us. And we do have small amounts of funding in the street department budget to do a few ramp crossings a year. So, we try to pick away at areas based on complaints. But otherwise, the Mill and Overlay Project and our reconstruction budgets are currently our two biggest drivers in getting compliance. And I would say that if we wanted to start to increase the pace that we get through the community, we could discuss allocating more street department funds towards ramp improvements. That would be the big, the big target.
Thank you, Jason. Other input as part of this public hearing?
This is Glenn Bear Coler, and with regard to those items near the schools and near the public buildings, it'd be nice to have a little additional detail as to what exactly that money would be spent for and what kind of improvements would be made before we make any major decision about what we're going to be funding. And again, this is a difficult year with the virus and everything and financially, and we need to be cautious about borrowing money and spending money at this point in time.
If I, if I may clarify, this document is just a framework for a path going forward. And it's just a guide. So, we're not pushing for any specific funding at this time. It's just to get this framework document into place.
Other input? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Also, motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
I'm Bear Coler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Mozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Before we move to the consent agenda, I neglected to say at the start of this meeting that the reason why the Marshall City Council is meeting at four o'clock rather than our regular five-thirty is because of the primary election today. And because of the primary election, we are required to adjourn no later than six o'clock PM regardless of where we're at on the agenda. So, we could adjourn sooner if that be the case, but we can go no later than six o'clock PM. So, I'll move us then to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening are the following items. The Consider Approval to Surplus Two, two thousand sixteen Ford Explorers for the Wastewater Treatment Facilities Improvement Project. We have a payment application to Magni Construction. Consider Authorization to Issue a Certificate, Certificate of Completion Related to Development of Property and Lots One, Two, and Three of Tiger Park, Fourth Edition, located at sixteen fifty-one and sixteen sixty-one, College Drive, Marshall. The request to, for the appropriate city officials to execute a certificate of completion and final certificate related to the finalization and closing out of a contract for private development between, for land purchase and business subsidy by and between the City of Marshall, the Housing Redevelopment Authority, and Ralco Nutrition and Nakamas Enterprises. And finally, to consider the approval of the bills and the project payment. So, is there any item that I listed on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the items on the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bear Coler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Mozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number nine. It's my pleasure to introduce this item, which is the introduction of David Shelkoff, who is the new General Manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. David started on July thirty-first. Comes to us from Valley City, North Dakota, where he was in a similar position in Valley City. So, welcome, David. If you, David is with us at the Merritt Center this evening. David, welcome, and I'd invite you to make any welcoming comments you want to make to the City of Marshall. We're glad you're here, and we look forward to your work.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for giving me some time to introduce myself. I know that you can recognize me in any kind of common place, I'm sure. I feel a little bit like the Lone Ranger. My identity is protected to protect the innocent. But, no, it is a great pleasure for my wife and I to be in Marshall now. We have moved into town, and we have enjoyed this community immensely. We, we recognize the pride of this community and its cleanliness, and it's, it's just got a spirit of friendliness, and we just appreciate Marshall more and more every day. So, thank you very much for giving me the time, and thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to work with such a fine group of people at the municipal utility. And I just appreciate, again, the openness and the welcome that I have felt and my wife has felt since we have been here. So, we look forward to working with you and the city, MMU, and the city working together just as seamlessly as it was in the past. So, with that, I just thanks again.
Thank you, David. The council member, De Kramer, is our liaison to the Utilities Commission. He may have some additional comments, but I would just say that in the City of Marshall, Marshall and Marshall Utilities have had a long partnership. Our staffs work together, recognizing that really what our ultimate goal is, what's good for the the people of Marshall, and those are also your ratepayers of the utility. So, working together, avoiding any duplication unnecessarily has really served this community well for well over a hundred years. John, do you have any comments you want to add?
Just a couple of things, a little bit of the background on the process. Now, there was many applicants for this position. This is, I think, being a little biased on that. It's kind of a prized position in the area, state of Minnesota. But the committee narrowed it down to first five and then down to three. And David was chosen out of that. David, you've got some very unique backgrounds that you know, I would say really are not very common in a utility manager. And you may just want to address that. You've, you've seen really all sides of the utility business in the investor-owned and the cooperative and the municipal.
Sure, I'd love to expound upon that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My history, I first have, I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force. I spent eight years of active duty there, got out, went to school. NDSU, by the way, thank you very much for our quarterback. We really appreciate that. He is amazing. Went to school and got a triple E degree, what they call Electrical Electronic Engineering Degree through NDSU. I really educated myself right out of the States. And my, my wife and I, we, we moved down to Iowa, worked for an investor-owned utility down there called Interstate Power Company, now known as Alliant Energy. We then worked there for ten years. And we had an opportunity to go to Dickinson, North Dakota, where I, I ran a power cooperative out of Dickinson, North Dakota, named West Plains Electric. So, for eight years, I worked as their CEO and worked with the people in neighboring cooperatives, and we were able to consolidate that cooperative. And then, my father gives me a call, and he says, "Hey, Dave, the City of Valley City is looking for a city administrator." And of course, City of Valley City is my hometown, and my father said, "Well, why don't you apply?" And of course, as a dutiful son, I have to follow my father's commandments. So, I applied and we got that job there in the City of Valley City, where, as Sharon knows, it's a city administrator is a little bit different than the general manager of MMU. So, with that background, I have an extensive background in management in all three of the utility types, an investor-owned utility, a cooperative, and now municipals. And I can bring that work experience here. I know that I have humongous shoes to fill in Brad Rus. Brad has been a tremendous leader and general manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. And I can't say enough about his integrity and his work ethic and the good work that he has done here in Marshall. So, thank you very much, Brad, and I appreciate the opportunity to replace you. I don't think anybody can, but I will do my best to make sure that the good work you started will continue. And my pledge to the city is this, is that I will work with you. I will work beside you, and you will see my support every step of the way.
Well, once again, welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
We will move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number ten. City of Marshall, Lyon County Economic Development Authority Partnership. I'll call on Sharon Anson to introduce this item and also recognize that the City of Marshall EDA Director, Lauren Dyts, is also part of this meeting by distance. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you on the council may remember that last fall, we had a discussion potentially on a partnership with the county. We had anticipated including a county-wide discussion with all the communities sometime this spring after January. And that was to be led by the county. And then, in March, of course, coronavirus hit, and we did not have that, that wider discussion with all the communities. But there has been emphasis by the county board to look at a partnership again in economic development, as well as the Economic Development Authority Board members, who really feel it's critical to, to share in, share in this arrangement. So, Lauren put a proposal together. It is a framework. Only at this time, we know that we have to have more discussion. But we wanted to give the city council a chance to get some background on it. We're hoping that if the council is supportive, that you would allow then Lauren and other persons present that were part of the discussion to present to the county board on August eighteenth, which is next Tuesday. So, I will defer to Lauren Dyts, who can present her, her presentation.
Thank you, Sharon. I'd also recognize before we turn it to Lauren that there are members of the EDA have also been invited to this meeting too. So, Lauren?
Thank you, Sharon, mayor and council. As Sharon mentioned, I'm here today to walk through our proposed plan that we would like to meet with county on. Sharon kind of prefaced how this all came about, but I did want to walk through a little bit. So, back in the fall of two thousand nineteen, the county was exploring hiring their own EDA staff. There was challenges there, the cost of a full-time staff supervising duties, who, who would that person report to, and just other challenges. Following that, the chamber did approach the county for an EDA partnership, and that kind of came out of the EDA position moving under the city and a need there. So, that was, started some other conversations, and you'll see we've had now quite a few different meetings with different parties to talk about what options are on the table and, and who makes the most sense and how we can move forward with this partnership. So, as I said, this came about because there is currently no one on the county level who is working on EDA projects. There's also no coordinated marketing efforts or a marketing budget dedicated strictly towards economic development. There has been desire for collaborative work, and that's community to community, not just on the county level. We already do work with some of the other EDAs and city administrators on small projects and seek advice across each community. So, having more of a coordinated effort there. And as everybody knows, there is an increasing pressure from South Dakota, obviously. That's always been a challenge for us, but they're making it more and more known with some of their more recent marketing efforts and some personal connections with businesses and, and trying to get them to cross state lines. And as I'm sure most of you know, there was previously an EDA partnership with the county. That was Discover Southwest. Some of the reasons we feel that did fail, there was not a lot of county oversight. There was no voting powers from the commissioners. It was just a contract that was executed, and there was annual reporting, but that was kind of the extent of that. There was also there, this was before my time, but meetings were held that were other communities or other cities within our county were invited, and it got to the point where little or none were showing up for these meetings. And then, there's lack measurables. It's hard to continue a contract where you don't have a success plan in place. So, for me, when I was putting this together, I wanted to make sure those measurables were there so that if we continue this annually, which would be the goal, or to have a long-term contract that we know what we're striving towards and that we're doing, we're delivering on our end. So, as I mentioned, the Discover Southwest partnership, this is kind of how it was laid out. There was desire at the time for promotion and programming for business and agriculture within the county. And services were provided. We have an inventory system for our available businesses and land that actually we still do maintain. But that was part of the partnership. And some of these other, there's, was marketing materials and just guidance on programming towards, as our contract evolved, we also added web maintenance and some transportation services. So, that contract ran from two thousand eleven to two thousand eighteen. There was some disagreements. I think that led to the ultimate end of that contract. But either way, that's in the past, so we want to look forward at, at what makes the most sense if we do choose to partner with the county moving forward. So, here is what I am proposing. I have developed the Lyon County Economic Advancement Partnership. So, the Lyon County Economic Advancement Partnership was established to ensure the economic prosperity of Lyon County, providing resources, support, and inspiration for both current and potential businesses. Lead, leads the way in exploring emerging, emerging opportunities, strengthening the regional workforce, and illustrating the benefits of living, working, and owning a business in Lyon County. And the way I've laid out this partnership, it focuses on these four areas, each of which have a different level of importance for the county and for different reasons. So, I just wanted to walk through what we are seeing each of these areas looking like. Obviously, business retention and expansion. This is important, not just for the county, but the city as well. One thing that, when I took over as this, as the EDA Director, relationships were very important, and we knew that going in. And being able to sit down with businesses and, and hear what they're going through and, and what they, what they need to continue to move forward and be successful. That's a really important key to what I do every day. So, to bring that to a county level, I felt was also very important. And I'm sure many of you know what a BRNE program looks like, but it shows appreciation, encourages expansion, and which would lead to sustainable job growth. It helps solve problems and challenges. It gains awareness of available resources, develops collaborative relationships, builds the county capacity and cooperation to sustain growth and development activities, and then provides better information and understanding to all of our area leaders, not just those business owners and working, those working in economic development. So, I've included potential action items here. And again, that's because I feel that those measurables are going to be important if this partnership is going to work. So, one thing we are proposing is one-on-one meetings with existing businesses. And we've actually laid this out more specifically, that our plan would be to visit two communities per month. And during those visits, we would meet with two to five business owners. Obviously, that all comes down to scheduling and what's feasible, but that would be our goal. And a big part of this will be tracking. We want to show that, that those conversations are happening and what information we're gathering from those communications. So, another area would be developing a business support group for new and emerging businesses. We originally said businesses that have been in operation for five years or less. Obviously, everybody has valuable insights, so we wouldn't turn people away, but that would be the, the goal area for that group. And then, just serve as a support center for current business owners. I think at times, especially in some of our smaller communities, if, if businesses are looking to expand, they don't know where to start. And just knowing where those resources are and having everything in one place is, is the goal of this partnership. The next would be marketing and recruitment. We already, as you guys had seen, last year, we did go through branding on a city level. This wouldn't be quite as intense, but really focusing on branding and our image as a county, what we have, who we are, and what we do that's unique or special from other counties in the area or in the states. unique or special from other counties in the area or in the states, positioning and messaging. This would include food, print, and sorry, and digital materials, then some targeting, and that would be done through research and surveys and media relations. So just getting our story out there so that people are hearing what we're doing here and what potential the county does have. Some of those action items would be press kits that we can send to new businesses, a video series highlighting what we have throughout the county, again, surveys and press releases and stories on our businesses. Next one would be representation and financial opportunities. This would mostly focus on grant writing, lobbying, and program development, just making sure that we're taking advantage of of what is available to businesses throughout our county and assisting with that, both on grants for ourselves, for the economic development team, as well as for those individual businesses. And then our last one is workforce. This is always an obvious one that's on everybody's top of the list. We talked about training and college transition. We are fortunate to have universities and then Minnesota West here within our communities, and being able to build a bridge there and and hopefully get a workforce that that is more beneficial to our community moving forward. Housing and childcare, those are always top priorities. And just being able to, again, assist on in within those smaller communities so that they know what resources are available to them and and help make sure that they're on track to continue growing their workforce. Another potential action area I have included, the chamber is working on building a business education network and a leadership academy. I know Brad's on the line as well. That's a program that it would start in Marshall, but I think if there was an opportunity to expand that to the county, that that would be very beneficial, and just building those leadership skills across across the county. So for this, and this is all, as Sharon mentioned, there's still a lot of discussion to be had, but what we'd be proposing is that there would be a board for this partnership. Originally, we were talking about county commissioners and EDA board members, and one of those EDA board members, we would prefer to be a city council member. But we've also discussed other city administrators, EDA staff, and mayors. Sharon actually has reached out to some of the other communities, and we do plan to have a meeting to discuss what this might look like and see what their involvement might be. But again, this is all just proposed. And then on a budgeting side, I have put in some numbers, and that's just so I know when I do go to county or if I do go to county, that I know what we would be requesting for a marketing budget. I was looking at 10 to 15,000 annually. I would like to put a customer relationship management software into place. That's a $5,000 to $10,000 cost, but it is only a one-time fee, and then those fees do reduce over the following years. And that would just be, again, on the tracking side, being able to to monitor what we're doing, who we're speaking with, and who we need to reconnect with. And then staffing, this would come down to how many hours we end up needing, because it will be additional work for myself and my staff. So I've just put in a range that I see as feasible, but we're able to adjust as we move forward. So I would take any questions anybody has or any comments as what they're thinking on this partnership.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. We're open then for input and questions.
This is Glenn Bearcoller. I was wondering if if this wouldn't be a good situation where we could have a joint meeting with the county board, city council, chamber, where we all got together and discussed this, you know, might work well in a joint meeting.
I think that's something that the county would be open to. I have only spoken with a couple of the commissioners and then with Lauren. So I think it's something we could propose.
Any other questions or input?
I appreciate the hard work that Lauren and her team have put into this, Mr. Mayor. I think that having been on the EDA now for four years, it's we've gone kind of back and forth with county stuff, but I think the time is ripe to start working more closely together. As the city, remember, the city is the biggest city in Lyon County. However, anything that comes to Lyon County benefits not only the city, but obviously the county. And I think it's the more we can do to attract businesses, the better. And I think that everybody should have skin in the game to help acquire that goal. So thank you.
Okay. Any other input? Sharon, do you have an additional comment?
The only thing I was going to add, just thinking about this, we did have representatives from the chamber, the county, and the city and EDA when we had the initial talks just most recently. Not saying it was, you know, full representation as suggested. And and with Zoom, I guess it's probably easier to gather maybe more participation because we can do it remotely without worrying about spacing and social distancing and things like that. But I did want to add that maybe that was in Lauren's presentation as well, but point that out.
Other input?
Yeah, I would like to, I agree with Lauren on, you know, South Dakota's running some pretty good ads now to attract businesses out of, well, they're targeting Southwest Minnesota. I believe I read that in, I think it was the Star and Tribune just recently or someplace I read that article. What I would like to find out, and Sharon, maybe you can help answer this. You came from Pipestone County. What coordination between the City of Pipestone and Pipestone County did you folks have for EDA? And I, you know, I'd like to look at what other partnerships, maybe other counties have done. I know Wilmer has a partnership with Candy Ojai County, I believe, and just some of that information. So I'll let you answer that, Sharon.
There is all different forms and all different types. In Pipestone, they had a formal county EDA under the Minnesota statutes of that the city operates under for EDA. The county can do the same. I know that if we go back in history, I know Lauren just went back to 2019, but the county have has looked at some of those options as well, Lyon County has. They didn't go that route. And I believe initially, under that arrangement for Pipestone County, they actually had financial participation by the by the cities that were in the county. That's not something that Lyon County is proposing here. They're they're proposing that they would do a general levy across the county and include the communities without without doing an additional levy. So that may be attractive for some of the smaller communities like Gant, where, you know, $1,000 here or there is an impact on their budget. So the mayor and I visited with Wilmer in Candy Ojai County. There they did a joint powers agreement, had special legislation. I don't know if we would need special legislation, but at the time that they were organizing this, that's how how they set that up. So good to definitely see the options and and see how we want to want to move forward. A lot of this will be hinged, I think, on county support. I don't know where the county stands. We'll know more, a lot more after the 18th. And then I do think city interest, even though the county is proposing them to them that not financially participate, it would be really difficult for a staff from Marshall and or the county to go into a community if there wasn't buy-in from some of those communities. So I guess that's the long answer to your question, Jim.
Sharon, I would just add to that also that when you and I met with the Wilmer Candy Ojai Economic Development Commission to learn about their their setup, also joining us was County Commissioner Paul Geltman and the county administrator Lawrence Stemberg. Other input?
This is Glenn Bearcoller again. I'm wondering about the surrounding communities. Do they you think they're going to feel like they're going to get much benefit from this? Or is all of the benefits pretty much go to going to the City of Marshall? And and how do we assure if we have this partnership that that they get their proportionate share of benefits from it?
As I mentioned, on the governing side of things, we have talked about including their city administrator, mayor, EDA director, whoever it might be for their city, to sit on that board so that they are able to provide input. We also, when we build the BRNE program, that's why I did the the way I have it set up where we'd be visiting other communities. If we're meeting with two to five businesses per month in a community outside of Marshall, I think that alone will will show benefit and and be able to grow the partnership year to year, because we'll have more input to know what type of programming or campaigns that we need to move forward with.
If I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, every community is different, depending on size and their current staffing. So, you know, Tracy, where they have a full-time EDA director may have a certain viewpoint, or a smaller community like Minnetoga, Gant, and Cottonwood, where the city administrator does not only city administration, but city clerk, elections, garbage cleanup days. I mean, they're doing everything in those communities. And so I, you know, for maybe some of the smaller communities that I just mentioned, I think that they would have more interest. Some of the areas that we think that we can do more of, that we haven't had the capacity to do due to staffing and and time is marketing. You know, we we really should have, I think, better materials promoting just even the City of Marshall. We do quite a few emailing back and forth to businesses and and, you know, we kind of got to scrounge around for different data. It's not all one place. Now Lauren is working on that, and I know that was a desire of past EDA director as well. So it's 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 a time factor. And I think with this, maybe we can devote devote some more time to to those activities. But I do, again, I just want to reiterate, I think county direction support is really critical to this. So I I'm relatively neutral on this concept, because last year I presented to the city council that we needed to focus on the City of Marshall and have a dedicated personnel to the City of Marshall. So as we go talk further with communities or the or the county, I want to ensure that the City of Marshall does not, you know, we aren't, we still have to meet our goals in economic development as well. That's why a key part of this would be staffing and sharing in that staff cost.
Any other input or questions? If not, Lauren, you will be presenting next Tuesday to the county board, along with members of the EDA.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Lauren. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 11. Agenda Item Number 11 is consider authorization to purchase two squad cars for the Marshall Police Department with us. To present this is Director of Public Safety, Chief Jim Marshall.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. The agenda item in front of you is a request for your consideration and authorization to purchase two squad cars for the Marshall Police Department. If you review your agenda item and report, you can see that we're currently on a four-year replacement schedule that's been put in place by the council a couple of years ago. About two months ago, we had a meeting with the Equipment Review Committee and had some really good discussion and talked about different options and reviewed the the spec sheets of those. And out of that discussion, we agreed to move forward with the proposal and request before you tonight. I reached out and we got two prices from the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement or Venture, which is the state bid price, as well as our local dealership, the Cruise Motors. You can see the pricing for those units currently. The state bid price came in at $32,720. Cruise Motors bid per unit was $33,580, with a difference of $859.76. I know those numbers sound high. One thing for you to maybe keep in mind that might take some of that sting off a little bit, just on our consent agenda, you agreed to surplus the two vehicles that we currently have. And we're hoping to get anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000 back in return from those vehicles. That's a Kelly Blue Book price on those currently. So we'll try to be optimistic and hope that we're a little bit on the high side of those. I'll maybe just open it up to any questions that you may have. And I kind of left it up for the council's discussion on the direction that we go.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So you have the information. Questions that the council has? John?
On the state bed, I'm assuming that is not delivered to Marshall? Or how would they be received in Marshall?
They are delivered to Marshall.
That is a delivered price.
Delivered price.
And that includes the transit.
It does. I believe that does. Yes.
Any other questions? Glenn?
This is Glenn Bearcoller. No matter who we buy the vehicles from, they would be serviced locally?
They would. Yes.
Other questions?
In the past, we've made it pretty customary that we're within a few percentage points to keep the business local. I believe this, and I'm not doing math as quick as I should, we're under a 3% difference here. I know $1,700 is $1,700, but I would support that we get them from Cruise Motors, because they're under 3% difference. Like I said, I can't do my math quick enough. It's like 2.5, 2.4% difference. I think at that value, it's worth it keeping the business local and buying from a local business that that spends money in Marshall. So I would make a motion at this point, we purchased two vehicles from Cruise Motors.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Just to comment, the it's about a 2.6% jump. So if you look at the state bed versus the 859, so I would agree.
Thank you, John. I was just doing math quick in my head.
Other discussion on the?
So this is this is Steve Meister. I would usually concur with that, you know, but again, when we look going forward into the future with COVID and the finances, I think every dollar needs to be considered for. So I I know it's less than 3%, but in this particular case, you look at the overall and 1,200 bucks is 1,200 bucks. And, you know, or 1,719, so almost 1,700 bucks is 1,700 bucks. And so I actually think that in this particular case, we should go with state bid. Just my just my two.
Jim, Jim Marshall, you still there?
Yes.
These vehicles get serviced at Cruise Motors too, correct?
They do get serviced at Cruise Motors.
Do we get to free oil for life if the vehicles are purchased from Cruise? I know Cruise offers that. Do you also get that in your squad cars?
We do not get that in our squad cars. We have them serviced through our our city street department. Does some of the maintenance on it that we can do, the warranty work we take out to Cruise Motors in that first year before we exceed the mileage usually on them. Maybe an interesting fact that I didn't bring up or didn't mention, the manufacturer's suggested retail price that Cruise has on these vehicles comes in at $39,740. So they do drop off that price, a little over $6,000 if that means anything.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions?
Can I ask?
Other discussion on the motion? Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, Jim Marshall, what what is the dealer for the state contract? Just out of curiosity.
I, you know what, as soon as Councilman De Kramer asked about delivery, I can't I can't remember who the dealer is. It used to be Nelson Ford out of the cities, I believe, but now I'm, don't quote me on that. I forget.
We've had statewide, there has been some issues with Nelson Ford. I don't know if that's been resolved. We personally, I don't think I've had issues with them, but I know that other units of government have. I only ask that out of curiosity. And the state statute requires we look at state contract bidding, if it's over 25,000. But the state bidding laws does not require formal bidding for anything under than 175,000.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, the motion on the table is to authorize the purchase of the two squad vehicles from Cruise Motors of Marshall. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll move then to agenda number 12, the grant of utilities meant to Great Plains Natural Gas Company. I'll call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works.
Hey, Mayor. Please advise if you can hear me again. I've changed my audio from headphones to computer. And I was told that maybe in the room it wasn't very loud. Can you hear me well?
You're doing fine.
Okay, great. So Great Plains Natural Gas completed some gas main replacement on South Forest Street in advance of our construction project. They had facilities that would be in conflict with some of the pipes that we were going to be placing in the ground. And they also had to replace some aging facilities. Part of their work resulted in then moving a district regulator facility from one side of the road to the other. And with that move, we offered up the city owned parcel on the corner of Camden and Fourth. And you can see it there in the attached easement drawing provided by Butel Mosey. So we did bring this by council as an information item. Boy, it's probably been nearly two months ago, right before the the district regulator was installed over there because we knew we wouldn't get the easement in time before we needed to get it cited. And council didn't have any comment at that time. So we went ahead and authorized the work. And now we're cleaning up with an easement after the fact. So staff would absolutely recommend to approve this easement to Great Plains.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason on this?
I move approval of the easement.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Jason, before we move to the next item, would you? There may be some who have not had the chance to meet the assistant engineer. So would you introduce him since he's connected with this meeting?
Yeah, great point, Mayor. Jesse Dean, our Assistant City Engineer, he's been on staff since May. He's on the Zoom meeting as well, and I think he's got his video turned on. So Jesse, do you want to introduce yourself briefly?
Absolutely, Council. My name is Jesse Dean. Like Jason mentioned, I've been here since May. Came in here from kind of a county setting. I've been working for counties for the last several years. So I'm actually really excited to be working for the city of Marshall. It's a it's a beautiful community and something that we appreciate quite a bit. Everything that I've been able to do here is is really expanded my knowledge as as an engineer. And I'm really excited to be able to keep helping the the community move forward.
Well, welcome, Jesse. And thank you, Jason, for introducing Jesse. We'll move then to agenda item number 13, which is striping and signage on Southview Drive, Saratoga Street and North 7th Street. Once again, Jason.
Thank you. Follow that introduction by putting some of his work on display. So staff's reviewing striping plans on North 7th Street, Saratoga Street and Southview Drive. And the purpose of re-investigating these striping plans is our seal coat project, which will occur next week, will cover the striping on North 7th Street and Saratoga Street. So that necessitates a quick movement if we wanted to make a striping change, which we we do suggest. Southview Drive, the proposed striping change is driven by the new elementary school construction and the recommendation from a traffic engineering study that was commissioned by the school district prior to construction. So I can maybe just touch on the highlights of the changes. We probably don't need to go through it in great detail. We did meet with the PIT committee and go through this in a detailed fashion. And I have spoken with other council members as well. North 7th Street today is striped with a continuous center left turn lane. We're proposing to maintain that center left turn lane through the Flint Hills property, but then have that lane drop off and go to a standard two lane striping configuration for the duration of the distance up to County Road 33 to the north. We're also proposing to stripe the white shoulder line. When you go to Saratoga, we're largely presenting what's there today, which is a continuous center turn lane. The minor differences are predominantly the the center or the white shoulder stripe or parking lane stripe. We are proposing to have that on the one side of the rover parking is allowed. We feel like it'll better delineate the the traffic lane. And especially as you go down the corridor towards the school, it'll help better identify where the traffic should be as it crosses through the school crossing. So you can see the hatching, the yellow hatching along next to that crosswalk. Yeah, where Kyle's got the mouse there, right by James Avenue. We're proposing to put that yellow hatching in as well to better identify that crossing location. That's also the location where a push button flashing light crosser is proposed to be placed in 2022 through grant funds with an agreement that we have in principle between the school district and and the state of Minnesota. So we're we're using the striping there as sort of a precursor to maybe a future bump out median placement, but that'll be a discussion for a later date. Largely the same through here, just some minor changes to the tapering. Now, Southview Drive, we're showing as part of this approval. Oh, this next line, I'm sorry, this next sheet, this is out to 23. The striping will remain the same. On Southview Drive, the proposed changes will be a significant change from what's seen today. Today, it's just a two lane road with on street bike trail and parking on both sides. This lane configuration would be three lanes, so continuous center left turn lane and two through lanes and parking on the south side only. And you notice the bike lanes are also bumped off of the road on that segment. So as you go down to the future pages, you can see the continuous left turn lane. That striping that you see in that proposed crosswalk there, that would not be painted at this point in time. That's just a placeholder. Somewhere in this region, we need to fit in a crossing for the future push button crossers. So I don't want to get hung up on that piece of the striping. But the general concept is a three lane stripe with that white edge line for to delineate the parking lane from the travel lane and no parking on the north side of the road. If you scroll down, Kyle, this this park or this lane configuration continues until this point. This is Southview Court East. And you see a crosswalk there. That's the location where the school district's widened eight foot shared use walk stops because their property stops. And they're proposing a ramp out to the street. So we're proposing to maintain painted on street bike trails as they exist today, similar to how they exist today. The only difference being to accommodate the three lanes, we need to lose parking. And we don't feel that there's any issue with not having parking from here to Main Street as all the businesses have off street parking available to them. So if you scroll down one more, you just see up here by Hy-Vee, the continuous turn lane gets you through Hy-Vee's entrances and the entrances to the south. And then it tapers into the turn lanes. So I think we can stop there. These other drawings are just to kind of show, they're included in the package, just to kind of show if we have concrete medians in the future that we would do a combination of concrete medians and striping to make those crossings shorter where we're going to have the push button crossers. With that, I think I would just open it up for for questions. I would also note, though, that PIT had comments. And one of the comments was that before we do any restriping on Southview, we should send notice to the property owners of the change. And staff would propose that that occur next year at some point before we get to actually doing the striping. I'd hate to get too far out in front of that. We're proposing, will likely be proposing a mill and overlay of Southview Drive at some point next year. And we we do the striping after that. So we could send out flyers to the neighborhood at that point that inform them of what we're planning to do. If there's any questions, I'm here for questions and Jesse as well.
Thank you, Jason. Input from the council or questions?
I have a quick question here. Is it correct that at the committee meeting that this was held or they had three different motions on this? And is that what we do here or is this going to be all one motion?
Jason, I believe this will be all one motion, correct?
We're proposing one motion, but if the council wishes to break it up, we would entertain that. I just want the council to understand that we do desire quick action on Saratoga and North 7th Street because those are being steel coated next week and we'll need to have a striping plan put into place. Southview Drive is maybe the one that's going to occur down the road.
Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
Appreciate the work that our committee did. So I guess I would go ahead and move that we approve this in one fell swoop.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion on that motion?
Jason, I have a question. I don't recall this being brought up at our meeting, but you said there was on street parking, I'm going to say from Urban Appeal to Main Street. There's gonna, is that going to be eliminated? On both sides?
Yeah, there, through our striping plan, there would be no parking on the road from Southview Court East out to Main Street.
And the only reason I ask that is that Hy-Vee, when they get their trucks in, sometimes their trucks park along there. It's only for a short period of time, but will they be able to park there?
No parking would be allowed today. If you look at the striping, the bike lane is up against the curb on the north side through there. So there really is no parking lane from Urban Appeal out to Main. But there is a parking lane available for at least a portion of that stretch on the other side. But even then, when it gets down towards Hy-Vee, the bike lanes get pushed out so far to the curb that you really shouldn't be parking there today either.
Yeah, and I'm fine. I just said maybe somebody should talk to Hy-Vee and let them know that their semis will not be able to park along that street once this is completed in in a couple of years. My other question, my other thing, and I brought it up at our meeting again, and and no disrespect to our current engineers because I think they do a fine job. And I'm going to go back to that. And I've been pounding on that from C, that C Street Saratoga intersection. You know, our community members have spoken. You know, they wanted a three way stop there, but for some reason, we keep listening to the out of town consultants who come in and do a traffic study in the month of May that we don't need a three way stop there. I mean, I guess I get really discouraged when we don't listen to our local residents. I know there's nothing that that probably can be done, but, you know, when we had the construction on Saratoga, there was a lot of people that really complimented that three or that that three way stop. And they wanted to see that continued. And it's just too bad that that traffic study, like I said, was done in May because it's it's totally different in the month of October or maybe January. And I'd really like to see a three way stop. So if you're going to lump all these into one vote, I guess my vote will be no. But I'm not opposed to the North 7th Street or Southview Drive. But I am opposed to that Saratoga, just in that one one location.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the roll?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller? Glenn?
Glenn, I believe you're muted.
He is not muted. He has said yes twice.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, yes. I get more than one vote here.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lazzinski?
Since Glenn voted yes three times, I'm not to vote yes just once.
So with that, the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 15 to consider the application for and a exempt permit for SMSU Foundation for an event January 11, 2021. Are there any questions about this?
Move approval.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
I'm staying.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item 16, the Commission Board Liaison Reports. The since we last met, from my standpoint, the the Fire Relief Association Board Trustees has not met. However, the Southwest Regional Development Commission, as I've mentioned before, I chair the revolving loan fund for the region. And the region did receive an award of 1.48 million dollars for loans to businesses that were impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. So of that, and that is available then to loan as a revolving loan fund with the 0% interest for the first year and then the interest then set following that first year at the current 1% below prime, which right now is about 1.4% or 2.4%. So the favorable terms, the payments deferred for the first three months. So our our committee has been very active and meeting weekly. And to date, we have approved in the region eight loans for a total of $538,000. And and again, 1.48 million dollars is available. So there's about $900,000 that will be available to loan out. And the deadline for loaning that out is May 6 of 2021. And if it's not loaned out by that point, then those un lent funds would be moved to a different part of the country where there was a higher need. The assuming that these loans are repaid, then those funds are retained in the region and then revolved for future loans that would not have the restriction of the COVID-19 economic impact. So those would be an asset going into the future. So with that, we'll move then, Steve?
Mine have not met. I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
And Craig?
None, I, none of mine have met.
Glenn?
Mission will meet next week on Monday. That's it.
Russ? John?
Okay. We did take some action on, or we listened to the information regarding the Lyon County Partnership regarding EDA that was a special meeting that occurred. The MMU will meet next week at on the 20th. And just a note, that will be Brad Rose's last official meetings. That's it.
And Russ?
Mine have not met.
Craig? Or not Craig, Jim?
Mine have not met.
Okay, we'll move then to the next agenda item then, which would be council member individual items. Jim, let's start on your end.
I'd just like to express, I believe, Bob, that you and the president of the college wrote a letter. I don't know if it was on social media, but I just want to say I support what you guys wrote 100% as a city council member. I appreciate that you came out and that you and I can't think of the the president of the college's name, but you guys came out with that letter. We are a very open and inclusive community. Unfortunately, we have a few people in our community that don't seem to like that idea. But we need to express that we are. And I want to thank you again for writing that that memorandum. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. That was actually co-written by SMSU President Kamara. With that, Russ?
Jason's still in the room or maybe someone? Can we get an update on the situation at the Red Baron Arena with the pipes? And did we get results from the pipes inspection and insurance and anything else? Just kind of curious. Have people asked me?
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar, so I'm going to defer.
Sharon?
We had had coverage or pay for coverage through Hartford Steam Boiler Company that that this claim was submitted to and they they, and I've got the letter, they denied the coverage. It was an exclusion under their policy. We we appealed that that decision. And I have to follow up with Carla on where we're at with that. I think I don't think they're going to change their mind. So the the route of insurance doing an investigation may not be one that we can take. And if you want us to consider other legal remedies, we certainly can.
Sharon, do we have a total amount that was spent? Sharon, do we have a total amount that was spent?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. John?
The only thing I have is my partner councilman in Ward One has decided not to run, and I just want to thank Glenn for the time that you have been on the council and the work for Ward One constituents, and wish you luck, but thank you.
I would echo that, Glenn, but also add, his work is not completed.
No, he's not done yet. He's got a few more months left. He's not off the hook yet.
With that, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is I had discussed with Jason some issues that we have in Ward Three with the accumulation of debris and other things on residential properties. And I appreciate all the work that our staff do to serve the residents and to deal with those kinds of issues. It's problematic, and I know that the vast majority of our residents do a really good job and are very considerate of the neighbors. And I appreciate the work that our staff does to intervene when we have those problems. And luckily, they don't happen very often, and they're typically not too severe. But I just want to thank staff for the support that they give to the community.
And Steve?
Kind of the same realm. Some of the things that I've noticed and heard about, trees and grass being overgrown trees over the sidewalks, so you have to dodge your, lose your head when you're walking or running. And the grass, I've had a couple of complaints. I've reported those to the city, and they've been taken care of very promptly, and I'm very appreciative of that.
And Glenn?
I just want to thank John for his comments and other people for their comments. And, you know, it was, the city administrator summed it up well in her email that it was a tough decision for me to make not to file for reelection. I'm honored to be on Marshall City Council, and I think you all know I'm a conservative, and I believe in term limits, and I've served eight years on the city council, and I believe it's time for someone else to have an opportunity to serve the citizens of Ward One. And I'm certainly thankful for the, to the citizens of Ward One that they gave me the opportunity to serve on the council. It's been an honor and a privilege, and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Glenn. I just have one brief thing. I know there's been a couple of life safety issues that have needed to be addressed in some rental properties, and that there is a process in place that those are, the life safety issues can be addressed by our fire chief, and I believe that has been, has been done. With that, we'll move to staff reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council, again, a nod to council member Bearcoller and his service to the City of Marshall. I've always appreciated his in-depth knowledge of a number of topics, and of course, a lot of follow-up questions, which makes us all better. So I appreciate his service, and I also want to give another nod to council member Bearcoller, who stated tonight that we need to be cautious when we start discussing our budget for 2021. And I think when staff comes in to present next Tuesday at our budget work session, I think that's what you're going to see. And I don't think we're going to know everything we need to know when we set the preliminary levy. And so this year, unlike last year, where we really set the levy in September and didn't change it to December, I think we want to leave some room potentially to do some additional thought process on how we get to where we need to be. And then we still don't know a lot about revenue and even some of the expenses. So I will add, you know, that's something that we'll probably be presenting in terms of our concept of the 2021 budget. I do want to also add to the CARES Act funding. We now have our EDA Director, Lauren Dyts, really pushing hard on the grant funds. Our interest thus far has been a little slow to come in. We have a deadline of next Friday, which is the 21st for the initial applications. So we'll do some more discussion with the EDA board. It may be that we may need to tweak some of the requirements instead of limiting it, limiting it to 15 full-time employees. Maybe we up that to 50. We definitely do not want to have money left in the city's hands or the county's hands in terms of business assistance, which I will add that the deadline of November 15th for the funds was imposed by the legislature. And the December 30th date, which is another date that the state has to encumber their funds, was set by the federal government. My opinion is legislatively at the state and federally, those dates need to be extended, and we need to have more time in terms of utilization of these funds. And I suspect that for all of our leaders in the elected official field, it's, I don't think we thought we were going to be where we're at right now. I thought we, I think there is a feeling we are going to be farther along in controlling this, for some of us anyway. And so I will hopefully be making some contact to our legislators and our federal representation on those, on that particular topics in terms of CARES Act deadlines. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of highlighting our new city employee in the engineering department, Jesse, I want to just maybe show you something that he had been working on, and it's really starting to come along well. Kyle, would you have the ability just to go to the city website quickly so I could show where the construction project updates are to the council? If you go to Public Works and then click on Construction Projects, Jesse's been maintaining and updating the site. You want to click that map at the top? This is the map that shows all of our current active construction projects for the season and a listing of streets and information. And then if you go back to where you were, Kyle, you see project descriptions on this site, listing all the relevant information for each project. And if you click under the project flyer for Z76, these are project flyers that were created for our projects. And we got to give a nod to, I believe it was Councilman Lozinski, who kind of showed us a little something fairly similar that he saw in a different community. But these flyers have been mailed to affected residents on the projects, and we're going to continue to do that going forward. And we'll also be posting them on this website, along with construction photos from time to time, and maybe some relevant updates periodically. So just a nice resource and something I wanted to point out to the council. I don't think I've got anything further.
Jason, that was well done. I know it was also shared on the city's social media today, too. So that was a good way of getting that out to the public. And I also think it was very good that the current update of the project status of when things are started and what stage they're in, I think that was very helpful. So thank you. Any questions for Jason? Not Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Councilmember LaBatt, Maha Agreement. Scott Vandermille and Sharon and I met and discussed the status of that agreement. An agreement was put together today, and I've discussed it with the Maha Board. And I'm hopeful that that agreement will be approved and brought back for approval, hopefully at the next council meeting. And then as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, all remaining issues involving the Minnesota Management Budget, deed, and the City of Marshall for Commerce Industrial Park have been resolved. And I will be bringing to council at the next meeting an amended declaration, which will clear up all issues out there and allow for further development of the soon-to-be unencumbered lots within that property. So that's taken a lot of, a lot of time with both myself and MMU. So that's all you have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move then to the remaining items, which include the Administrator Brief, our information items, as well as our listing of upcoming meetings. Are there comments on any of those items? Is there anything else to come forward at this council meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to adjourn discussion? If not, we'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Well, that motion passed. We are adjourned.